Hello. It's live, it's Saturday night. No, okay. Welcome to the Greenfield City Council, December 15th, 2021, 224th regular meeting, 6:30 PM. We're meeting via WebEx. Madam Chair, may I have a roll call?
Yes ma'am. Counselor Jarvis?
Here.
Counselor Gwynn? Counselor Disorder?
Here.
Counsel Autumnley?
Here.
Counselor Dolan?
I'm here.
Vice President Gilmore?
Here.
Counselor Wheeler? I do not see that he's attending yet, but I will let you know when he joins. Mayor?
Here.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Here.
Counselor Elmer?
Here.
Counselor Forgie?
Here.
President Ricketts?
Here.
And Counselor Stempel Ray. Again, I do not see that she has joined, but I will let you know to the best of my ability when they do join. Madam President?
Okay. Thank you. This meeting is being recorded and videotaped by the City Council in GCTV-15. If any other person's present or doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. From this moment forward, Madam Chair, if there's lots of background noise, or people are speaking out of turn, will you please just mute the microphones?
I will.
If it comes back on and it continues, um, let's try to just get them off the meeting altogether with. Thank you.
Counselor Wheeler has joined the meeting.
Great. Welkamo.
Thanks, Press.
Okay, let's see. The Pledge of Allegiance?
Perfectly voluntary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you. Okay, I'll accept the motion. I'll entertain a motion to approve the November 17th and December 7th City Council Meeting Minutes.
I'll make the motion. Mayor? Second Mayor?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone abstain? Thinking we might have had some people missing from that one, but okay.
I saw some hands up and heard some voices.
Okay. Shout out if you'd like to abstain. All right, so, looks like we have a pretty hefty agenda tonight. So, let's just be mindful and respectful of each other, and let's keep things brief um, when we can. With everybody still getting their points across. Okay, communication from superintendent schools and school committee? Welcome, you're on.
Good evening, President Ricketts, and all the counselors, and Clerk Scott, everybody. Before I forget, I wish everyone happy holidays, happy new year. The superintendent I do not think is joining us tonight, something previously scheduled, and she's, of course, sends her regrets and the happy holidays and happy new year as well. As always, I keep it brief, and I will happily answer your questions after just a few notes. We had our December meeting last Wednesday, and we said goodbye to Member Hollins, former superintendent, Dr. Hollins. She has finished her, at this point, her term on the, on the school committee, as well as Member Katie Karen, who's also finished her term. We're looking forward to having our new members join us in, in January, and we'll do our reorg meeting at our, uh, uh, meeting on the 12th. A couple of notes from the, um, reports from the administration at our last meeting. The, many people have been talking about the state of the libraries at our elementary schools, and we have, with the guidance of ASKP, that's Assistant Superintendent Karen Patnode, uh, that's my nickname for her, because that name is, ASKP is coordinating uh, an assessment, an audit of our elementary libraries. Uh, we're specifically looking for equity updates to, um, the materials we have in the libraries. If you've been in one of our elementary school libraries, you will need contact. I'm sorry, that's not me, I'm not sure who that noise is. Hopefully everyone can hear me okay. Two other final notes, um, we have a new food service director, and I want to first thank Star Heard and her crew for hanging in with us for a few months where we did not have a food service director. Rhonda Schwakman is either started or is starting very soon, um, and we're really happy to have uh, that kind of, that ship kind of under stable guidance again. And then the final note on staffing, we've had, you know, of course, a lot of changes, and we are excited that on January 3rd, we will have a new permanent principal at Greenfield High School. Derek Morrison will start on, on, uh, January 3rd and comes to us, um, oh gosh, I should have looked it up, I don't remember. But if anyone's interested, you can certainly email me, and I can get you the information. Uh, but he's starting on January 3rd. That's all I have, and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you so much, and happy holidays to you as well.
President Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray has joined the meeting, and I just wanted to let people know that I went through and I muted everyone so that there would not be background noise, so if you're going to speak, you will need to unmute yourself.
Okay, so, I will look for hands, or you can just write "Speak" in the chat, I have the chat up now. So, any questions? Okay, Chair.
Short and sweet, thank you all, take care, have a great meeting.
Okay, thank you, I'll talk to you soon. Okay, communications from the mayor, city officials, and employees?
Yes, hi there, season's greetings, happy holidays, everyone, and, um, happy to be here this evening. I too will keep it very brief, I don't really have any major news to share with you, but I do, you have a few contracts coming up this evening to approve, and I want to give a really big shout out to Chief of Staff Danielle Laterno and HR Director Diana Laterno, who, and of course, our council, um, Labor Council Gordon Quinn. But, um, we, they did yeoman's work, particularly HR Director Diana Laterno, but really, they were a great team negotiating our contracts, and there were seven units to be negotiated. There's two, two or three left, uh, I think just two really. So, uh, the negotiations went very well, uh, they were long, it took a while, it's, as I said, seven different units, uh, but they went very well, every, they were very congenial for the most part, where we hit, um, some bumps in the road, we were able to negotiate them out, so, um, really, kudos to everyone, people in the bargaining units, their union representatives, um, it was, um, it was long, it was lengthy, it took up a lot of time, but, uh, we are happy to have that behind us for the bulk of, uh, our employees, and kudos to them too, so, uh, thank you for doing that, and really, that's all I have. I can certainly take questions if people have something that I, that they, pressing on their mind that they want to discuss with me, I'm, I'm happy to take those questions.
Okay, thank you so much, Mayor, and, um, I would just like to say, as being part of negotiations for school committee, I know what those negotiations can be like, and I remember them being very long, until 1:00 in the morning kind of meetings.
Oh no, we didn't do that.
But, so, thank you for all of that, negotiations are not easy, but, you know, thank you, and I also, um, just want to take this moment to commend you and the GBA and, um, everyone downtown who put on a wonderful jingle fest, and the lights, and just welcome people into the city over this weekend, and always, so, just thank you for everything that's going on downtown right now.
Sure, thank you, I'd like to take credit for a lot of it, but really, again, a lot of people other than me and along with me, um, contributed to that. Unfortunately, I was, well, it wasn't, it was a good thing, I was at a mayor's conference, um, for several of those days, so was not able to attend a lot of the events, but I got good reports, and I was following it, so, everybody shop downtown, that wasn't the only time, you've got plenty of days left to shop.
That's right. Okay, thank you, so, um, Counselor Elmer, and then Counselor Mayo.
Uh, I just wanted to second the President's comments, um, I, I haven't read every word of those contracts, but I, but I've read enough of them, and I've been involved in enough of those negotiations to know that was a hell of a lot of work, and, um, my, uh, my thanks to the Laterno women, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mayo? And you're unmuted, sir?
Hi Mayor, uh, I'm not sure if this falls under your jurisdiction, but it was asked of me by a, um, a shop owner, that, um, about the, um, plastic bag ban that we, ordinance that was passed, uh, uh, over a, or, uh, over a year ago, and, um, he said that, basically, that, um, um, you know, he does comply, he, and he has complied with the, uh, plastic bag ban, and he sells his bag for five cents like so, so many other stores do, but he wants to know, uh, who's in charge of making sure that the ordinance that passed is being adhered to, because he told me that there are several shops on, in Greenfield that are not in, in compliance with the, uh, no plastic, uh, uh, rule, so, I, I told him I would ask it, uh, the question tonight, and, uh, find out if I could get an answer.
Well, I would love to answer that, I have no answer for you, but I will certainly get one for you and pass it on, um, if there's anyone here who was there at the time and understands what that enforcement piece is about, I'd be, it looks like Clerk Scott has her hand up, so if she wants to chime in, and, Captain, President Ricketts is fine, I'm happy to have her help me out here, I honestly don't know the answer.
Yes, um, yeah, definitely, um, let it go to the Madam Clerk, because I've been in her office before, when different calls like this have come through, so go ahead.
Sure. We get a lot of enforcement questions, but not that one.
Um, the enforcement lies with either the Board of Health or the Health Department. Counselor Mayo, if you send me an email, I can easily, um, reply to that email tomorrow with a specific, whether it's the Department of Health or the Board of Health.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, and again, thank you, and thank you, Mayor, for keeping that brief so we can get through this agenda tonight. All right. So at this time, is there any public comment, or did you want communication from anyone else? Mayor? No, and?
I don't have anyone else, no.
Public comment, I'm not showing anyone either, whoops, here we go. Wendy Goodman, your name, address, you have three minutes.
Thank you, hi, I'm Wendy Goodman, I live at 529 Green River Road, I really did not want to be the first person to speak tonight in public comment, but there we have it. Um, I also serve on the Human Rights Commission. I'm not speaking as a commissioner, but I do want to say that being on that commission and thinking in terms of human rights has really kind of shifted the way that I'm thinking about a lot of things these days. So, there are two things that I really want to bring up. One thing that was brought before the commission is what's going on in the schools, and I understand how much work they're doing and how much support they're looking at, and I just feel like we really need to bring this up and make it a, a, a really clear community issue, not just, I've, I've now looked back at the school committee meetings because I hadn't been on them, but this is really serious stuff, and I think it should be something that all of the commissions in town, and, and everybody that's in this community need to step up and look at, what can we do together? Um, I have some other thoughts about that that I will save for the commission meeting. I also do want to say on that, on that, or the committee meeting, rather, on that point, and this may be very inappropriate, but I think it's really appropriate that those of us that are serving in town clarify if we are speaking for our roles in town, or we are speaking for ourselves. And so, to say I'm a commissioner on the Human Rights Commission, I think is important understanding, but that I am not speaking for the commission. And I have heard comments of people coming forth and saying, "I am this," and then not clarifying that we're only speaking for ourselves, and I think that's a very important piece, so I want to say that. The real reason that I'm here tonight, though, is about housing. Because I know that we all, again, are really concerned about housing, but the piece about this temporary fire station, and what potentials there might be to at least ameliorate to some extent some of the housing issue, I think really, really warrants attention, and, and I know we've all been thinking about it, but to really have a clear, okay, this is the committee that's checking this out to see what we can do with this fire station when we no longer need it as a fire station. So, those are my two comments, I, um, I'm so concerned, well, and I should go back to the Lunt property, but I'm not going to do that right now because these other two issues are so up, and I think that the issues of the environment, what we need to do as a town is stop thinking about ourselves at every moment, and stop thinking about the people that are coming after us, and what are we leaving, and what can we clean up? And that goes with our schools, and that goes with our housing, and that goes with our environment and the Lunt property. We've become a society that is, the bottom line is always about cash, and that is getting us deeper and deeper into a hole. We have to think about life. And so, that's where I come from in all of this, is how do we function in a way that supports all of us thriving to the best of all of us? And I see that as the school issue that's up, the housing issue that's up, and we've got such an opportunity with this temporary fire, fire station, and again, what's happening with the Lunt property? Let us be a model and step up for our future, and acknowledge that we can survive our present, and maybe even thrive in it. So, that's what I have to say, thank you for listening, thank you all for your service, I know it's not easy, and I appreciate us all showing up because we really do want to do our best, and we have to think about everybody in doing that, not just the ones of us that have an easier time having our voice expressed. Thank you, and may next year be better than this.
Okay, thank you, um, Glenn Ayers, could, your name and address, please?
I'm Glenn Ayers, I live at 254 Davis Street. Good evening, President Ricketts and counselors, I would like to bring two matters to your attention tonight. The first is that a petition was submitted to the town to create a public involvement process for the Lunt property cleanup, and that was submitted on December 1st. Uh, the town has 20 days, um, to begin their activities, but the actual plan, the public involvement plan, needs to be prepared within 30 days of the submission of that petition. And the first step for that plan preparation is that the city needs to identify all of the community concerns in accordance with the, um, guidance provided by DEP. They have a protocol for how interviews are conducted with all of the people that signed the petition, to make sure that all of their concerns are incorporated into the draft plan, and then a public meeting will be held, uh, to discuss the draft plan, which will be subject to change based on input from that meeting. So that's where we're at with that, I want to thank everyone, um, on the council who signed on to that petition, and this is just a petition to bring more public involvement into the cleanup process, which is clearly needed. And I also want to bring up a second issue with you, which is, which is tangentially related to the Lunt cleanup, and that is that the Health Department in Greenfield has not been involved, as far as I know, with any aspects of the Lunt cleanup, and they should be the main entity that is in charge of that cleanup for the city. And I want to use that as a jumping board to talk about the charter review, and how we have a charter here in the city that, under Article 6, creates all of the administrative organizations in town, the Department of Municipal Finance, the Department of Planning, the Department of Central Maintenance, the Department of Human Resources, uh, many boards and other things are created by the charter, that's how they exist, and yet, there is no mention anywhere in the charter of the Health Department. And according to the charter, the Health Department does not exist, and that needs to be fixed. In this charter revision, we need to create an actual Health Department in accordance with the charter, that is the only mechanism that can create that. There is a Board of Health created within the charter, and the mayor gets to appoint three members, uh, to that Board of Health, but that is the extent of the mayor's involvement with the Board of Health. Every two years, or every year, she gets to appoint a member for three years. However, I think that we need to address the charter for the Health Department, and also the role that the mayor plays or doesn't play in regards to the Health Department. And I will be attending the next A&amp;O meeting to discuss that. Unfortunately, the Charter Review Commission, uh, got that issue completely wrong. And thank you very much for this opportunity to address you.
Okay, thank you. Pamela Goodman, your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, it's Goodwin, with a W-I-N, and, um, 54 High Street, uh, here in Greenfield. Um, I want to thank whoever's in charge of giving free parking during the Christmas season, I was at the Reliance Center, and I saw that some of that is free, I don't know if the meters are going to be free, so I park out back when I was taking a friend who needed free food, um, so that's wonderful, and also, the town looks lovely with all of the lights, I really, I don't know, I remember talking with the DP double W people and stuff about the Christmas lights and snow coming, and so, I really appreciate that, and I also appreciate all your hard work. Um, I'm here because I want to be the squeaky wheel, I guess you could say, about the AdHOC zoning committee, that I know previously the mayor had said it was on her bulletin board. I have been working with Housing the Homeless, um, quite a long time now, so I will jump on board the other person who also said, "Let's really all be on the same page about people who need that." And also, MJ Adams has reached out to me, and Athena has reached out, and so, um, we've got some things in the works that I think will be very, uh, very wonderful, and I appreciate all the hard work for those. In conjunction with that, I also want the temporary fire station to be property that we can use for housing because we need the public transportation. Um, I am not sure, um, how fast the Board of Health calls people back, we have need of speaking with somebody at the Board of Health, and so I'll just lay out there, when you dial that number and you leave a message, are they there, are they listening promptly to the calls, and are they able to call back? Um, and, and I think that's critical to have, um, right now, and I know it's personally an, an important problem for me. Um, in terms of plastic bags, I'm so excited, um, because I work with Greenpeace, I would love to see if somebody could point me in the direction and see if we could get rid of the plastic straws, uh, because for the same reason, you know, for, for the destruction of the planet, uh, for not, uh, biodegrading, I don't know if kombis will be all upset if they got paper straws and have to spend more money, but I have a permanent straw, and I gave my son one, and, you know, it's just a matter of really thinking through of the ocean and the pollution and the landfills and all that crap. So if somebody wants to email me about that, I'm excited about that. Um, I guess that's about it, except that I will say that I'm very involved in public housing statewide now, um, I've always been involved in public housing, but now I'm, um, I'm on the State Committee, and, um, anybody has questions about what it's like in public housing, I'm no expert, but I could, I could give you an earful. So I appreciate all your hard work, and I am pleased that, um, to see you again, I missed the December meeting unfortunately, thank you.
Okay, thank you, would anybody else like to speak from the public? Put your name in the chat now. Okay, seeing none?
I had my name in the chat?
Oh, sorry, let me see. Uh, let me scroll, hold on. Say your name and address.
Carissa Clifford, 390 Mohawk Trail.
I don't see it. Oh, oh, did, did you send it to me, one-on-one?
Oh, I don't know, I just entered it in the chat, I thought, I thought it was to everyone.
Okay. Okay, um, go ahead, I know, I see I have a private one, but I'm not going to even look at it, go ahead.
Okay, um, I also wanted to address the Lunt property issue, um, I want to keep a really bright light on this because I think it's the most important issue facing our town right now. Um, first, I, I would like to thank Counselor Disorder, uh, bless her heart, she has been working tirelessly to do research and, um, reviewing the previous cleanup, um, procedures and processes so that we have a little bit of an idea of what's going on, uh, and basically, which is that the site is still contaminated. Um, I also want to thank Glenn, uh, so much for, uh, initiating the public involvement plan, and the counselors, uh, that signed on for that.
Excuse me one second, I'm sorry, please do not write in the chat, we go through this every month, it's illegal, okay? Do not write in the chat. Thank you, I'm so sorry, please continue.
Um, just wanted to also thank the counselors, it, it's important right now to feel like public input is valued, and, and by their signing that petition, um, that's how I feel, I feel like that, uh, my input is, is appreciated. Um, I think this is the biggest reason we need to, um, have this sort of public oversight is because there's been so much conflicting information. Um, I feel like, uh, at the EDC meeting in October, uh, we got a Clean Bill of Health, so, oh, it's Clean Bill of Health, all, all right to sale, but whereas, there's no authorization use, and that, um, um, you know, testing was ongoing. Um, but then I read the last report in the DEP, that was in 2006, and, and that's not the case. But then I read the last report in the DEP that was in 2006, and that's not the case. It's not a Clean Bill of Health, in fact, it's, there are parts that it's getting worse, the contamination. So, yeah, we just need to be involved and really get on top of this for the safety and health of our citizens, especially living in and around that area, not just at the rehab facility, but that as well. So I wanted to just say I'm looking forward to reviewing the plan as soon as possible. I hope it comes out, and thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
President Ricketts, you're on mute.
Would anybody else like to speak? Madam Clerk, will you also check the chat?
Yeah, I don't see anything in the chat, and I don't see anyone with their hand up.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Again, I know you, some people are sending it to me privately. I don't have time to read it, okay? So just use the main chat. Okay, so at this time, I'd like to close public comment. Okay, public hearings and second reading, Councilor Forgie.
Councilor Forgie, you are on mute.
Of course I am, thank you. Okay, public hearing. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 17th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Am I reading the correct one?
I think you are reading last month.
Last month? Well, let me just move down the page here. Anybody on your committee can also jump in if they have it for you. Sorry for the holdup, I apologize.
Take your time.
Page 30, Chris.
Thank you. We went through this in committee, in the other committee as well, so I do apologize. It's not going well, sorry.
It's okay, there's other people on your committee, somebody can read it if they want to help out.
Chris, I've got it.
Okay, thank you, John.
Public hearing, in accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, December 15th, 2021 at 6:30 PM at John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, or via WebEx if required, to receive public input on the following. Transfer 13,375 from contract stabilization for central maintenance union contract wage provisions. Approve 1,700 for payment of invoices from KP Law PC from fiscal year 22 Energy Department budget. Appropriate 780,000 to develop the Greenfield Skate Park. Appropriate $34,359 from contract stabilization to fund a union contract for clerical, library, and UE. Appropriate $82,092 from free cash to fund a union contract for Greenfield Police. Appropriate $98,251 to fund a union contract for SSE-A. Appropriate $150,520 to fund a union contract for DPW. Appropriate $1,700,000 from free cash to Capital Stabilization Fund. The City Council may consider the same on Wednesday, December 15th, 2021 at 6:30 PM at John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, or via WebEx if required. Materials can be obtained from the City Clerk's office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or phone 413-772-155, extension 6163. And should I do the second reading, or is that?
Yes, please.
Great. The City Council's second reading, December 15th, 2021. Transfer 13,375 from contract stabilization for central maintenance union contract wage provisions. Approve 1,700 for payment of invoices from KP Law PC from fiscal year 22 Energy Department budget. Appropriate 780,000 to develop the Greenfield Skate Park. Appropriate $34,359 from contract stabilization to fund a union contract for clerical, library, and UE. Appropriate $82,092 from free cash to fund a union contract for Greenfield Police. Appropriate $98,251 to fund a union contract for SSE-A. Appropriate $150,520 to fund a union contract for DPW. And appropriate $1,700,000 from free cash to Capital Stabilization Fund. Public hearing, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, December 15th, 2021 at 6:30 PM via WebEx, to adopt a residential factor in accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 58, Section 1A, which shall be used by the Board of Assessors to determine the percentages of local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property. The assessors shall provide all information and data relevant to making such determination and the fiscal effect of the available alternatives. The hearing is required under Section 56 of Chapter 40 Massachusetts General Laws. Penny Ricketts, Greenfield City Council.
Thank you, Councilor Bottomley. All right, and let's see, do we have another public hearing?
They've all been sufficiently read, President Ricketts.
Let me see, anybody from the public like to speak on any of that?
I don't. Never officially opened the public hearing.
Yes, we should.
President Ricketts, would you like to open the public hearing now?
Yes.
Thank you. It is 7:07 PM.
Okay.
I also do not see that anyone has indicated in the chat that they would like to speak under the public hearing.
So we can close this public hearing.
And it is now 7:08 PM.
Okay, the public hearing, it's been closed. Okay, let's see. Motion, orders, and resolutions? I will read Order Number Fiscal Year 22-026. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Rita Gardner, and ordered to approve payment of a prior year invoice in the amount of $115.50. Ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves the payment of prior year invoice for Baker's Office Supply in the amount of $115.50 to be paid from FY '22 Human Resources Department Budget. Nine tenths vote required. Sure, okay, it's been made and seconded. Any comments?
Baker should get interest on this.
All right, can we just have a roll call vote?
Councilor Jarvis?
Yes.
Councilor Gwin?
Yes.
Councilor Disorder?
Yes.
Councilor Bottomley?
Yes.
Councilor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Councilor Wheeler?
Yes.
Councilor Mayo?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilor Elmer?
Yes.
Councilor Forgie?
Yes.
Councilor Stumpel Ray?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Forgie?
Order Number Fiscal Year 22-044. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Rita Gardner, and ordered to approve payment of a prior year invoices in the amount of $1,700. Ordered that the Greenfield City Council approve the payment of prior year invoices for KP Law PC in the amount of $1,700 to be paid from the fiscal year 22 Energy Department Budget. Nine tenths vote required.
Second, Disorder.
Okay, it's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call vote.
Councilor Gwin is in the chat.
Go ahead, Councilor Gwin.
Yeah, I just wanted to say if we have any recommendations from Ways and Means on any of these after she goes through them, it would just be helpful if there was any questions or concerns.
That's fine, thank you. It was a unanimous positive recommendation. We have a roll call vote now?
Councilor Jarvis?
Yes.
Councilor Gwin?
Yes.
Councilor Disorder?
Yes.
Councilor Bottomley?
Yes.
Councilor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Councilor Wheeler?
Yes.
Councilor Mayo?
Yes.
Councilor Herschfeld?
Yes.
Councilor Elmer?
Yes.
Councilor Forgie?
Yes.
Councilor Stumpel Ray?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Councilor Forgie?
Order Number Fiscal Year 22-043. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Rita Gardner, ordered that the sum of $13,375 be appropriated from the contract stabilization account to assist in funding wage provisions of a new contract agreement with the Central Maintenance Union.
Two-thirds, yes, two-thirds, majority vote required, and it did come out of committee with a positive unanimous recommendation.
Second, Disorder.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Jarvis?
Yes.
Councilor Gwin?
Yes.
Councilor Disorder?
Yes.
Councilor Bottomley?
Yes.
Councilor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Councilor Wheeler?
Yes.
Just go to the next person?
Okay, I'll come back to him. Councilor Herschfeld?
Yes.
Councilor Elmer?
Yes.
Councilor Forgie?
Yes.
Councilor Stumpel Ray?
Yes.
Councilor Mayo? I see he's having a low bandwidth problem at this time.
Okay, let's continue on.
President Ricketts?
Yes and yes.
And I see that Councilor Mayo is still having a bandwidth problem. Would you like to move on?
Yes, I would. This needs two-thirds, right? This one?
Yes, and you definitely have that.
Well said, thank you.
Thank you.
Did he just pop on? Nope.
I don't see that.
Councilor Forgie?
Thank you. Order Number Fiscal Year 22-060. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Rita Gardner, ordered that the sum of $34,359 be appropriated from contract stabilization to fund retroactive wage provisions of a new contract agreement with the City Hall Clerical and Library employees, United Electrical, Radio, and Machine Workers of America, UE, and its affiliate, Local 274 of the United Electrical, Radio, and Machine Workers of America. Two-thirds majority vote.
Second, Disorder.
This also had a unanimous positive recommendation. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Councilor Jarvis?
Yes.
Councilor Gwin?
Yes.
Councilor Disorder?
Yes.
Councilor Bottomley?
Yes.
Councilor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Councilor Wheeler?
Yes.
Councilor Mayo? I will come back to him.
Thank you.
Councilor Herschfeld?
Yes.
Councilor Elmer?
Yes.
Councilor Forgie?
Yes.
Councilor Stumpel Ray?
Yes.
Councilor Mayo?
Continue on, please.
President Ricketts? I don't see that Councilor Mayo has been able to join again.
Okay.
Would you like to move on and declare the vote?
Please, yes.
Okay, the motion required a two-thirds majority of nine, and it has achieved that level. The motion passes.
All right. Councilor Forgie?
Order Number Fiscal Year 22-062. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Rita Gardner, ordered that the sum of $98,251 be appropriated to fund retroactive wage provisions of a new contract agreement with the Salary Scheduled Employees Association, SSE-A, to be funded as follows. Contract stabilization, $83,091. Sewer retained earnings, $7,059. Water retained earnings, $8,101. Total, $98,251. Two-thirds majority vote.
Second, Disorder.
This also came with a positive unanimous recommendation.
President Ricketts, you're on mute.
But I can't try to log in.
I'm sorry, I'm talking to Councilor Mayo. Hold on one moment, sorry, everyone. Okay, do you want to listen through my phone?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, where am I?
The motion has been made and has been seconded, and the
President Ricketts?
...made a report. Councilor Gwin would like to speak.
Yes, go ahead, Councilor Gwin.
I just have a question for Councilor Forgie. Is it a normal process to take money from the water and sewer in covering this item from a contract? Is that just, is that normal procedure is what I'm asking?
Yes. The employees are all covered under the SSE-A contract. However, not all employees work in general administration. Some of them work for the sewer fund, some of them work for the water fund, and as you know, they are enterprise funds, they are self-contained, so their salaries come out of that to begin with, so any retroactive or increases in pay would have to also come out of those funds.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, you're welcome. Okay, any other questions or comments?
President Ricketts?
Yes, please.
May I make a suggestion to Counselor Mayo? That he go to the agenda and he call in from his phone rather than listening?
He tried it, it didn't work.
Thank you.
So, sorry. The messenger. Okay. Okay. Okay, so, any other questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote?
Yes. Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwen?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Y- yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Count, uh, Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld? Counselor Hirschfeld?
Um, is he there? Wait, let me get two cans and string so I can help out.
He is on, however, he has low bandwidth. I will come back to him. Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld, you are on mute. There he is.
Yes, yes.
President Ricketts, do you wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, Counselor Forgie?
Order number fiscal year 22-058. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves the attached resolution titled, quote, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Greenfield, Massachusetts to Dedicate the Land for the Greenfield Skate Park Permanently for Park, Playground, or Recreation Purposes." Uh, majority vote required. The resolution reads as follows. "A resolution of the City Council of the City of Greenfield, Mass. To dedicate the land for the Greenfield Skate Park permanently for playground, park, or recreation purposes. Whereas the Greenfield Skate Park is a community-wide asset, and the preservation and improvements to this recreation area is a city priority as evidenced in the city's most recent open space and recreation plan. And whereas the city wishes to meet the present and future needs of all city residents. And whereas the city wishes to preserve this resource for recreational purposes in perpetuity. And whereas the city has the opportunity to make improvements to the site using state grant funds that require Greenfield Skate Park to be permanently dedicated for park, playground, or recreation purposes. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to take such action as is required to comply with the requirement of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities, PARK, Park Grant Program, that the Greenfield Skate Park as shown on Accessors Map 57-93 become permanently dedicated for park, playground, or recreation purposes under Chapter 45, Section 3." Um, let me just see here.
We will need a second.
Second, Lieutenant Stempel.
Um, and this came out, um, I believe of our committee with four in favor and one abstention. Okay, any questions or comments? Um, Counselor Dolan?
Yeah, I just wanted to say quickly, I'm, I'm thrilled to see this. Um, I remember vividly when I was looking at the agenda, um, putting this on my campaign flyer four years ago as a priority. So I'm really happy to see it come through. I know there's been a lot more than four years' work put into it by a really dedicated team. Um, I think we have a great site and a great project. So I'd be happy to vote yes for this out of my last meeting.
Thank you. Counselor Stempel?
I'm very in support of giving our youth, um, activities to do. Um, I have a, say, young adult, but that's what she is. They spend a lot of time at the YMCA, and I can't imagine that this skate park wouldn't be used all the time by, by kids of all ages. Um, I just have some questions. I see that they're both submitted in forms of resolutions and not financial orders. Is that because we don't have a, um, defined, um, uh, cost with the grants? Um, and, and who submitted these resolutions?
So I will defer this back out to Kristi Moore. I think she could best answer. It is kind of an unusual, uh, structure to this vote, but it is required. So Kristi?
Sure. So, um, the grant requires two resolutions. One, to dedicate the land, um, in perpetuity as a park, which is what was just presented. And the second thing is the, uh, resolution for the development, um, for the, um, sum of the project. And I believe, um, that's, um, number 059 tonight. I think it's the, the next one. You guys will be voting. And it's to borrow, um, for the entire amount because it's a reimbursable grant, remember.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, I just want to say that, um, I want to agree with Counselor Stempel and Dolan on this. This has been a long time coming for our youth. And we just need as much as we can for them, and I'm very excited to see this moving forward. Okay, may I have a roll call vote?
Counselor Jarvis?
Sorry, I just quickly have one more thing that I want to say. Sorry.
No, okay, go ahead Counselor Stempel.
Thank you, President Ricketts. Um, I just wanted to, um, I think it was Ms. Goodwin who mentioned that we are lately a community of dollars and cents. And so I do want to speak to the amount. I guess we're not on the right one yet. So I'll speak at the next one. I'm lumping them together because they're so related. So I'll hold until the next one.
Okay.
My apologies.
No problem. Okay.
Counselor Jarvis?
Oh, yes.
Counselor Gwen?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Hardly yes.
Yes and yes.
Thank you, President Ricketts. That's, the motion passes unanimously.
I clearly can't hold a phone and look at my laptop and my papers at the same time. Okay, let's pass. Okay, Counselor Forgie?
Thank you. Order number fiscal year 22-059. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves the attached resolution titled, quote, "A Resolution Authorizing Development of Greenfield Skate Park by Appropriation or Borrowing, Subject to Reimbursement from the Quote, 'Parkland Acquisition and Renovations for Communities, PARC, Park Grant Program,' End Quote." Majority vote required. "A resolution authorizing development of Greenfield Skate Park by appropriation or borrowing, subject to reimbursement from the Parkland Acquisitions and Renovation for Communities, PARC, Park Grant. Resolved that the City Council of the City of Greenfield hereby votes to appropriate and to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the mayor to borrow up to the sum of $780,000 for the purpose of development of the Greenfield Skate Park, which has been dedicated to park purposes by the City Council. And that the City of Greenfield be authorized to file any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts deemed necessary under the Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities, PARK, uh, C, Park Grant. And/or any others in any way connected with the scope of this resolution and the City of Greenfield and the Recreation Department be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary on behalf of the City of Greenfield to affect said project."
I need a second.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. So- Do you see Counselor Mayo online now?
Yeah. Give me just one second.
My phone is echoing, so.
If he unmutes himself, I'm sure we'd be able to hear him.
He is on.
Okay. Um, Madam President, I just wanted to say that this, um, this, we did discuss because there is, uh, some, some language here that's, uh, a little bit different. But what it basically means is that, uh, the whole entity of the project is going to cost $780,000. We have also have an authorization out there for $350,000. And the grant will come in at $400,000. So in order to get this done by the end of December, which is a requirement of the grant, that, um, and, and Kristi can back me up on this as well. Um, we had to, uh, go ahead and vote the total sum of money with the expectation that in January, the original authorization of the $350,000 will be rescinded. So that authorization will go away. The authorization we're voting on tonight is for the $780,000. Uh, $400,000 of which will be reimbursed through grant. It was a unanimous positive recommendation that came out of committee. Thank you so much. Any, um, questions or comments? Maybe Counselor Stempel, do you?
I do have, and I'm sure there's other people who have the question in terms of, were we aware of how the grant operated before we, we voted to allocate the previous amount? Because to me, it sounds like we'll have two, two amounts out there. One of the, the 380 or what have you, and another of the 780. Um, and so maybe, I just want to, I'm obviously in support of this. I just don't want to hear people saying whatever they're going to say. Thanks for talking about it, because we're doing everything right. I just want it explained in layman's terms so everybody can understand the process.
Perfect.
Yeah. Thank you for that, Stempel Ray. Director Moore?
Sure. It's kind of a catch-22 with our grants. Um, in order to apply for the grant, we had to show that we had our percentage of the grant, which was the 350. And obviously, the only way that we could get that, um, through the Rec Department was through capital. So that's what that 350,000 that was approved with the capital process. And because of that, we were able to apply for the, for the grant. Um, the language in both of these resolutions had to be approved by the grant coordinator in Boston. That's why they are very wordy, in my opinion. Um, but they are almost identical to the previous, um, park grant that we wrote for the Dog Park Project at Green River. Um, so they are very similar. I hope that clarifies. And as I said at Ways and Means, um, we will definitely rescind the 350 um, at the January meeting which will come. Obviously, I don't, it's taken me a very long time to get this funding. I don't want to have anything jeopardize this, and I appreciate your support um, in moving forward with this project.
Yeah, and, and clearly, this has, this is written by some really good-intentioned people who have no idea how to manage municipal budget or how that works. Um, and I don't think that it should prohibit us from getting forward, going forward with this project because obviously, um, we're following the process. We are not spending $780,000. We are spending less than half of that in order to build the skate park. And I'm so excited. It's, it feels like we're getting a, a discount. Um, because I, I heard some of the other numbers. Gosh, it's been six years that I've been working on this project with you. And I know it's been even more. I'm just like, Susan Rogoffic is like in the back of my head right now, and I can't believe she's not here right now. Um, and also the students who came before us and spoke in, at Sanderson Street on behalf of the project. And now all those kids are like in high school. So there's that. They were not in high school before. So anyway, long story short, thank you so much for going over that process. Um, I encourage my fellow counselors, if you still have questions about how that financial process works, um, to ask them so that you feel comfortable voting for this. But you should be very excited to vote for this because, um, our, our young people, and like I said, our young people of all ages, um, need somewhere to go, and, and, and I'm, I'm just so excited. The only wish I have is that it was closer to the downtown. Um, but it's near a hospital, and that's perfect.
No, it's on Chapman Street.
No. Isn't it?
It's on Chat- yeah, it's in the Chapman David Street lot. That was the, the former grant application at Riddell Street.
I have like the, I'm sorry, I have the worst sinus infection that I've had for the last two weeks, so I apologize for the confusion.
For close to 14 years, we've been trying to land on a location.
And everyone's asking us to do something with that lot. And so I'm so excited that it's going to be for kids of all ages. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Gwen?
Yeah, right from the, the start, when Counselor Stempel Ray said this seemed unusual. Um, it, it didn't come to A and O because even though they were asking for resolutions, they were really financial. So President Ricketts sent it to Ways and Means. We, we, and right from the get-go, it was a little odd. Um, but I understand, and I'm glad they took this on. My question, I guess, is, um, the grant that we're receiving is 400,000. Is that correct? Or are we getting the 430,000? And is there potential to increase that? Um, or is our difference, we originally authorized 350 when we're actually going to pay 380? Is that correct?
If I may, President Ricketts?
Yes, please.
So, um, thank you, uh, Counselor Gwen, for asking that question. So the total amount that the, that we will receive is the 400,000. And we have the 350, which was the capital. And then, um, together, we've received donations and fundraising, which is the other 30,000. That's how we-
Kristi, thank you for that clarification because that was going to come up. And, uh, I just wanted it here and talked about. Um, so our original 350 is still our existing 350. When this dust settles, the same 350 we authorized is the same 350 that this is going to do. And we're going to have a park that has been, uh, a project by so many for so long. Thank you very much. I will be in full favor of this.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes ma'am. Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwen?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Um, continue on, please.
Thank you. Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Uh, Counselor Mayo? You're on mute, Counselor Mayo? There you go, Counselor Mayo. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Director Moore. Counselor Forgie?
Order number fiscal year 22-061. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Rita Gardner, ordered that the sum of $82,092 be appropriated from free cash to fund retroactive wage provisions of a new contract agreement with the Mass Cop Loco 470 Greenfield Police Union. Majority vote required.
Do I have a second?
Back to me.
And what was the recommendation from the committee? It was a unanimous positive recommendation. Thank you so much. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please. Everybody just keep your mics open.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
President Ricketts, would you like to vote?
Yes, yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Counselor Forgé? Order number fiscal year 22-063. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Rita Gardner, ordered that the sum of $150,520 be appropriated to fund retroactive wage provisions of a new contract agreement with the United Public Services Employees Union, DP, Department of Public Works, to be funded as follows: Free cash, $81,819; sewer retained earnings, $35,916; water retained earnings, $32,785; total, $150,520. Majority vote required. Madam President, this came out of committee with a positive recommendation, unanimous.
Second, Disorder.
Thank you so much, mate. Seconded. Any questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote? Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Counselor Forgé? Order number fiscal year 22-064. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Rita Gardner, in order to appropriate from free cash in the amount of $1,700,000 to capital stabilization, ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate the sum of $1,700,000 from free cash to capital stabilization fund. Majority vote required. This also received a positive unanimous recommendation.
Second, Disorder.
Questions or comments? Not seeing any. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
President Ricketts, would you like to vote?
Yes and yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Counselor Forgé? Order number fiscal year 22-067A. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the City Council adopt a minimum residential factor of one, resulting in an equal tax rate for all classes of property for the fiscal year 2022. Majority vote required.
Second, Stempel.
This also came out of committee with a positive unanimous recommendation. Perfect. Any questions or comments? So I'm so glad to hear this recommendation. I'm very happy to hear it. Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor, Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Order number fiscal year 22-067B. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the City Council votes that no residential exemption be adopted for fiscal year 2022. Majority vote required.
Second, Jarvis.
Madam President, this also came out of committee with a positive unanimous recommendation. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Order number fiscal year 22-067C. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the City Council votes that no small commercial exemption be adopted for fiscal year 2022. Majority vote required.
Second, Disorder.
Madam President, this also came out of committee with a positive unanimous recommendation. Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments? Counselor Stempel Ray?
I just, I know that there's a lot of conversation in the city every year about as of one and what it means, and why aren't we giving a tax break to citizens versus businesses? And I see Joseph Figari on the line. I also see Harold on the line as well. And so I was just curious if, if we, if we could, I know we have a lot of stuff here, but I think this is really important, that every year we go through this conversation, and some folks don't quite understand the meaning and the importance of, as, as we rebuild our, I guess, our business economy, what having the, the straight factor means to the community. And I'm curious if we can't either have Harold or Joey speak to that quickly.
Joe, go ahead, or I'll, I will pipe in.
Okay, thank you.
Harold, why don't you give them the facts and I will be the supporting cast?
So the commercial, the small commercial exemption is implemented by virtually no communities across the Commonwealth. In part, what you have to remember is that we're talking about property tax exemptions. Most small businesses tend to be renters in, in businesses or properties that are owned by maybe a, a third party. So a small residential, a, a small commercial exemption really doesn't end up benefiting any of the, the small property owners. Where you might find a circumstance where it would provide a benefit is where you have an owner-occupied commercial building that happens to employ less than 10 employees.
Thank you.
Okay, are you done, Harold?
I am.
I wasn't sure if you froze or not.
Yeah, I wasn't sure either. I'll, I'll just say that the board has had a history of recommending, you know, residential factor of one, mostly because the residential population or the residential properties make up almost 75 to 76% of the tax revenue. However, I think there was some great conversation with the Ways and Means to continue the discussion. In other words, why are some of our extremely valuable commercial properties, you know, maybe not paying more? They're certainly valuable pieces. So, you know, we, there's a lot of discussion about COVID and commercial and all this other stuff. I guess I will simply say that I've recommended these, these suggestions or these recommendations as of the residential factor of one and a no to the commercial and a no to the residential because it just seems as though we're in a place where, you know, we have to finalize where we're at with our values. We got our approvals from the Department of Revenue at 5:17 tonight for the values, and we got an approval for 5:47 for the new growth. We are at the 11th hour. We apologize that we are presenting this to the council at this time, but this is when the Department of Revenue has approved our numbers. It's, it's, it's unique. I have not had this happen in my 10-plus years doing this. So, so back to your question, Ashley, why are we suggesting this and where's the balance? Again, it's a big conversation as to where to put the, where to put the tax focus on. However, in this, right now where we're at, we suggested a factor of one. It's an even tax percentage for all, for all classifications. Does that answer it in the short and long and short things?
Yes.
President Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder has her hand up.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Harold. Thank you so much, Harold. And Assessor, Board of Assessor member Figari. We received all of these recommendations tonight at the 11th hour for the taxpayers out of Greenfield. We did the right thing. We made the right decision for the community. And I will say this, that we do effectively have a split tax rate where the homeowners pay a higher tax rate compared to the commercial. But I think that we absolutely did the right thing for this year. And I know that our Board of Assessors are going to continue to look at this. We have brought many subjects to them for review, and I have great faith that they will look at that and that, that we will be, we will be keeping an eye to the homeowners in this community. That is why I voted in the affirmative for this, regretfully, but I voted in the affirmative. We have many questions, which on December 15th could actually not be answered, and we would have put the community at great risk and the taxpayers at great risk. So there was a lot to this, and the, the better place of valor was voting the way that we did. But there was a lot behind it at 5:45 or 5:17. There are commercial properties that were missed. There was personal property that was missed, but I have great faith that our Board of Assessors and whoever it is that we hire next is going to be looking at this with great insight. Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm gonna try this again. Please do not write in the chat. Okay. So Counselor Forgé, would you like to just explain who the last two people who spoke were? Thank you. Thank you. We had a rep, we have, first of all, we have Joseph Figari, who was and is our, still our elected assessor. And we also have Mr. Harold Scheid, forgive me, is it Scheid?
Scheid is, Scheid is the pronunciation.
Scheid, okay, thank you. Who was a representative from RRG, which is our assessing consultant. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. And I know that every year when we go through this, we always say we're going to start this conversation earlier, you know, even though we do get the final, you know, numbers really late, but we always say we're gonna, you know, start really early, like in the spring, and just start to have these conversations. So maybe one year. Okay, any more questions or comments? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. S. N. Joseph Figari. Thanks for all your work. I did come to one Ways and Means meeting earlier. And just thank you for everything that you shared with us. Thanks to all the counselors so far who've really kept things brief and kept this going so we can get through this agenda. Let's keep this roll going. Okay? Counselor Gwynn?
Counselor Gilmore is going to read this motion?
Okay.
The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following appointments by the mayor. Samantha MacGyver, Board of Health, term expires December 31, 2024. Heidi Weeks, Crossroads Cultural District Committee, term expires December 31, 2024. Hannah Brookman, Greenfield Local Cultural Council, term expires December 31, 2024. Scott Conti, Historical Commission, term expires June 30, 2023, to finish out term of Terry Ruggles. Zoraida Agudelo, Mayor's Task Force Against Domestic Violence, representative of the Franklin County DA's office designated by the FC District Attorney as per Charter Section 6-24(c), Subpar F2, term expires December 31, 2023. Dave Chichister, Planning Board Alternate, term expires December 31, 2024. Danica Hostetler, Recreation Commission, term expires December 31, 2024. Mary Phillips, Recreation Commission Alternate, term expires December 31, 2024.
Second, Disorder.
And recommendation from committee?
Yeah, this had a positive unanimous recommendation, and welcome to people that are coming aboard for the first time or coming back.
Thank you. So I'd like to say that I know the majority of these folks, and I welcome them all as well. I am very pleased to see Dave Chichester and Zoraida, both of those people I have worked with in the past over many years. And so we're very lucky to have them, more than you'll know. Okay, any other questions or comments? And I think I'm echoing, but I don't know why.
You are.
Okay. Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé? Counselor Forgé, you are on mute.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
Thank you. I don't hear the echo anymore.
Okay, thank you. All right, Counselor Gwynn and whoever else.
Vice President Gilmore has agreed to read this motion also.
The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following reappointments by the mayor. Randall Bernard, Board of Licensed Commissioners, term expires December 31, 2024. Douglas Mayo, Commission on Disability Access, term expires December 31, 2024. Marcia Staples Love, Council on Aging, term expires December 31, 2024. Karen McCormick, Council on Aging, term expires December 31, 2024. Michael McIntyre, Franklin County Technical School, term expires December 31, 2024. Rabbi Andrea Cohen Kiner, Greenfield Local Cultural Counsel, term expires December 31, 2024. Hannah Ratschaffen, Greenfield Local Cultural Counsel, term expires December 31, 2024. John Basilia, Historical Commission, term expires December 31, 2024. Douglas Mayo, Historical Commission, term expires December 31, 2024. Mo Lyons, Human Rights Commission, term expires December 31, 2024. Irene Woods, Mayor's Task Force Against Domestic Violence, term expires December 31, 2024. Caitlin Von Schmidt, Mayor's Designee, Mayor's Task Force Against Domestic Violence, term expires December 31, 2023. George Tomalsis, Planning Board, term expires December 31, 2024. Amy McMahon, Planning Board, term expires December 31, 2024. Ed Berlin, Public Library Board of Trustees, term expires December 31, 2024. Joe Rigary, Public Library Board of Trustees, term expires December 31, 2024. Butch Hawkins, Public Safety Commission, term expires December 31, 2024. Merk Jackway Wilson, Reappointment from Alternate to Full Member, Recreation Commission, term expires December 31, 2024. Jean Wall, Redevelopment Authority, term expires December 31, 2024.
Second, Forgé. Any questions or comments?
This also received a this also received a positive unanimous recommendation from committee.
Okay. Not seeing any comments. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder? Counselor Disorder?
Continue on.
Thank you. Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
He's muted.
Counselor Disorder, you are on mute.
Okay, yes and yes.
Thank you, President Ricketts. I can't seem to locate Counsel Disorder. Give me just one minute. Counselor Disorder, you are on mute. If you would, unmute and vote. I don't see that's happened yet. President Ricketts, would you like to call the vote and move on?
Please.
Thank you. The motion was passed.
Okay. A and O?
Thank you. I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article 6, Administrative Organization, Section 6-2, Merit Principle, be amended to ad language as indicated below in bold text. All appointments and promotions of city officers and employees shall be made on this basis of merit and fitness demonstrated by examination, education, and certification, or by other evidence of competence and suitability. And that the City Council further instructs the city clerk to submit the approved vote to the legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request said legislature to amend the city charter.
Second it, Elmer.
Okay, recommendation?
This had a positive unanimous recommendation from committee. And adding only what you saw in bold type, which was the recommendation.
Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder is still muted. I will come back to her. Counsel, oh, she's unmuted now. Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Can I, I was never asked if I wanted to vote.
Oh.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, Ways and Means, I mean, A and O.
Move that be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article 6, Administrative Organization, Section 6-3, Department of Municipal Finance, subsection A, Establishment Scope, be amended as indicated below with the strike-through text to be removed and the bold text to be added. The added text, how do we want to proceed on this, just in that comment? Clerk Scott or?
I would suggest stating the language that would be removed and then state the language that is to be added.
And then read the last paragraph. Thank you. So the strike-through version, the Director of Municipal Finance shall assume all the duties and responsibilities related to municipal finance activities, which prior to the adoption of the Home Rule Charter were performed by or under the authority of the city accountant, the city treasurer, the city collector, and the Board of Assessors. That will be removed. And we'll add, the Department of Municipal Finance shall include within it the city accountant, the city treasurer, the city collector, and the Board of Assessors. And that the City Council further instructs the city clerk to submit the approved vote to the legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request said legislature to amend the city charter.
Second.
This also received a positive unanimous recommendation from A and O following what you saw in your packet for rationale.
Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none? Roll call vote?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote? Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. A and O?
Move that be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article 6, Administrative Organization, Section 3, Department of Municipal Finance, subsection B, Director of Municipal Finance, be amended as indicated below with the strike-through text to be removed and the bold text to be added. Department of Municipal Finance, we're taking out the word bylaw and adding the word ordinance. And that the City Council further instructs the city clerk to submit the approved vote to the legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request said legislature to amend the city charter.
Second.
This also received a positive unanimous recommendation.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes. Yes and yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
I'm sorry?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. A and O, or all the rest of them, did they pass unanimously?
No.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
All right. I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article 6, Administrative Organization, Section 6-5, Assistant to the Mayor for Economic Development and Marketing, be amended as indicated below with the strike-through text to be removed and bold text to be added. Assistant to the Mayor, Economic Development and Marketing, was striking the word may and adding the word shall. And that the City Council further instructs the city clerk to submit the approved vote to the legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request said legislature to amend the city charter.
Second.
This motion was defeated. It was one no and two abstentions. And that's where the vote came from on changing the word may to shall.
So when people are voting this, what exactly are they going to be voting?
A yes vote would change the charter from the word may to shall. A no vote would leave it as it is with the word may.
If anyone wants clarification on the situation, why it was defeated, I'm happy to supply that.
Does anyone want to?
Counselor Stempel is in the chat box to speak.
Okay, Counsel Stempel?
I just want to ask for all of these to hear a little bit of the rationale. I know it just feels like we're trying to rush through everything and these are it took a long time to work on these, so.
I think it's because we read the meetings.
If we could hear the rationale, I think that's warranted. Thank you.
On this one, the committee discussed whether the word may or should instead of shall, this would make it mandatory, except for budget considerations to have the skilled position at the executive level. In our committee, it was discussed and as I recommended, we had one no vote and two abstentions. And we just could not agree on whether it should be mandatory or not, and it went through as such.
Thank you.
Counsel Forgé, as from the committee, might have more, but it was a pretty cut and dry of may versus shall discussion.
Yes. Counsel Wheeler?
Thanks. Something occurred to me that didn't occur to me when we voted on this during the charter review, which is whether this would require the person holding the position to have that title. And I don't know if that's something that was talked about at A and O or not. But I'll probably abstain because I'm unsure about that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counsel Forgé, did you want to add anything?
There's nothing to add. I just wanted clarification on the vote again from Clerk Scott.
So a yes vote would change the language from may to shall. A no vote, the charter would remain as is currently written with the word may.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Roll call vote?
Counselor Jarvis?
No.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
No.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Dolan?
No.
Vice President Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Wheeler?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion is defeated. It did not receive the majority required.
A and O?
I move that be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article 6, Administrative Organization, Section 6-7, Planning and Construction of Municipal Buildings and Other Facilities, subsection B, Powers and Duties, be amended as indicated below with the strike-through text to be removed and the bold text to be added. Being removed would be from time to time. And and the added version would be quarterly and and file a written report at least annually with the mayor in which it shall make recommendations as to the need for any project or projects. The committee will meet, continuing with the sentence, as necessary. Striking out, the committee shall file written reports at least annually with the mayor in which it shall make recommendations to the need for any projects or projects. And that the City Council further instruct the city clerk to submit the approved vote to the legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request said legislature to amend the city charter.
Second it, Elmer.
All right, this was a positive unanimous vote. We discussed this quite extensively. And a lot of the talk was with the former wording in there that talked about from time to time. From time to time was a bit vague to be in a charter. And we wanted it to be more accurate for the mayor's purpose so she could say to a committee that she needs a, or the mayor needs a report annually. It just ties it up so we have these committees reporting back in a stronger version.
I don't see that there are any comments requested in the chat box, President Ricketts.
Okay. Any, no question?
Roll call vote, please. Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Abstain.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, abstain.
You abstain?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
A and O?
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article 6, Administrative Organization, Section 6-7, Planning and Construction of Municipal Buildings and Other Facilities, to amend the second paragraph of subsection B in its entirety and replace it with the following in bold text. Planning and Construction of Municipal Buildings and Other. So we would be striking, whenever any construction work on any municipal building or other facility is authorized, the Planning and Construction Committee shall be responsible for all work in connection with the project, including site planning, surveying, engineering studies, architectural plans, and specifications, and the supervision of construction. That would be taken out. That would be taken out and the, uh, following would be that entire piece. Whenever any construction work on any municipal building or other facility is authorized, the Planning and Construction Committee shall monitor the work through contact with the Department of Planning and Development and Building Inspections Department.
Second it, Elmer?
And that the City Council further instructs the city clerk to submit the approved vote to the legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request said legislature to amend the city charter.
Second it, Elmer?
This also received a positive unanimous recommendation, uh, from committee. Um, the, the purpose, uh, amended language, the second paragraph would broaden their responsibilities on an ad-needs basis. Um, and that was, um, the discussion and that was a more, uh, direct piece of work.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I see Counsel Disorder has her hand up and Counsel Mayo has her hand up, his hand up, and Counsel Stempel is in the chat.
Okay. Counsel Stempel, Counsel Disorder, Counsel Mayo.
Um, I mean, this is more of a recent thing, but was the, after the conversation of folks today saying that the Board of Health should or shouldn't be involved, was that a discussion in terms of adding the Board of Health as a responsible party in the Planning and Construction Committee? Or Listening Department, Planning and Development, and Building Inspections Department?
It was not in A and O at all, maybe to Counsel Wheeler or Counsel Forgé from the, or Counsel Gilmore from the Charter Review Committee?
Um, I, I think what Mr. Ayers was referring to was that the charter does, uh, mention and state, uh, the Board of Health, which is a three-person board appointed by the mayor. What I think he was saying, that that was sort of the basic top level of Board of Health, and then he was looking for, I believe, I don't want to speak on his behalf, but he is looking for what I would say would be administrative language to fill in the duties and responsibilities and everything else of the Department of the Board of Health and the Artillery.
I understood that, but what I'm saying is, um, for oversight of construction in the city, whether it's a municipal or private building project, um, there seems to be concern that they should be also involved in terms of remediation if that's involved. And here in this entity, as the paragraph is rewritten, it says, "shall monitor the work through contact with the Department of Planning and Development and Building Inspections Department." What I'm saying is that the Board of Health is not listed there, and I'm asking if that was a consideration to include that city department with the, I guess, oversight of, um, construction work on municipal buildings or other facilities.
On behalf of the, what I know from the Charter Committee work, it was not discussed.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Disorder, Mayo, and Wheeler?
Um, I'm just asking, um, against Counselor Gwynn, I tried to follow most of, or most or all of the Charter Committee meetings, but this one, I had a question about what, what was the depth of the change to, to planning and construction? I often thought as a member of Planning Board, um, you know, someone would be looking at where things went and what, what, what was the depth of the change in, in, in that language? And I apologize for not following that to the degree perhaps that I should have, but if you could explain further before I vote.
Um, I don't know if there, there was a lot of discussion, at least on our level. We followed, you know, the committee's recommendation, um, and Counsel Forgé, like I said, explained it broadened the responsibilities, um, on a as-needs basis of those departments, knowing that, um, it, it gave, um, whenever the construction work on a municipal building is authorized, um, the Planning and Construction Committee shall be responsible for all work. Uh, the Planning and Construction Committee shall monitor the work, um, with the Department of Planning and Building Inspections. I think, um, that was the major change, uh, which is more of a monitoring, um, situation than a responsibility, uh, situation which would come from a different source. Counsel Forgé, am I in the right ballpark?
Yeah, yes, definitely. Um, there's something else for us to consider, though, that with our past building projects, it's been the mayor's, um, uh, it's fallen to the office of the mayor to make appointments to committees for, say, the library, uh, the library piece and the fire department piece. So it's, it is more of an oversight because there's still, still the administrative responsibility can be, the decision can be the mayor's to go ahead and appoint. If, for instance, this was going to be something that, uh, was going to be planned for the future, I can see where Planning and Building Construction Committee could be activated to start working on something like that.
Okay, so, um, Mayo?
The mayor, President Ricketts?
Um, excuse me, one second. Um, Counselor Mayo? Um, then, um, Wheeler, Gilmore, Jarvis, and then the mayor would like to say something?
I just have a, a couple of comments that touch upon, uh, the two committees or commissions that I'm on, uh, the Historical Commission in Greenfield and also the Disability Access. And I was wondering, uh, oftentimes they're, uh, they're not brought into the factor if there's changes to the building, um, uh, or if, or if a building is demolished, we find out about it, uh, from the Historical Society, uh, way too late, or the building is gone and we would like, uh, and for the disability, obviously, there's a lot of disabled people in Greenfield and changes to building, uh, uh, really does affect them. So I want to see that, you know, that they're brought in, uh, to the realm of discussion when, uh, building, uh, changes to buildings are made because they're either historical or they need, uh, to comply with ADA. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wheeler?
Thanks. Um, I believe Counsel Forgé already confirmed this, but I did want to also confirm, uh, in response to Counsel Stempel's question, that, um, I don't believe the, what you said about Board of Health being included in this, I don't believe that that came up during the charter review. I just, discussions, I don't think it occurred to anyone. Um, certainly, there's, there would be nothing stopping the mayor from including the, the Board of Health, but, um, and I also just wanted to sort of clarify to, that the, this change essentially takes the power of, um, and the, the, takes the responsibility over building projects away from the Planning and Construction Committee and puts it in the executive. And, um, it seemed to be most people's understanding that the mayor's office was already more or less responsible for these, um, building projects, uh, with the exception of subcommittees specifically dedicated, obviously, to the construction of, for example, a, a library or a fire station. Um, I'm a little bit on the, on the fence about it. I guess I'm, I'm willing to, to trust that this is the way things have actually been working and that it's okay. I wish that we had heard from more than one Planning and Construction member, but, um, so be it.
Thank you. Counselor Gilmore?
I was going to say something, um, very similar that, you know, when we were reviewing the charter with, um, you know, Counsel Wheeler, Counsel Forgé, myself, and our, and the mayor's appointees, we were talking about what's been happening in practice and making sure that the, the charter reflects that. Um, but I don't have anything substantive to add beyond that.
Okay. Counsel Jarvis?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to, to, uh, to say that when these projects happen and the building inspector will make sure that the ADA is, is, is complied with because that's his job, that's what he's sworn to do. And, and, um, I'm sure if the mayor felt like, like, uh, the Historical Commission had to be involved, that they would be involved and all parties would be involved. We could add every entity in the city underneath this, this char, this part of the charter and end up with such a convoluted piece that, that no work would ever get done on municipal buildings. So I think we, we, you know, um, the, the building inspector has a lot of pull for fire, for ADA, for all, all these, um, um, concerns that people might have, and he has the power to enforce them under Mass General Law and under the IBC. So I think that kind of takes care of the, the scope. That's all I have to say.
Counsel Disorder?
So I just want to be clear from, I think what Counselor Wheeler said, um, you would, and if I'm, if through the president, I may speak to Counsel, if I may ask that of Counsel Wheeler, you actually feel that then this puts the onus on the committee that is appointed by the mayor as opposed to, um, building and construction? No. Okay, I see Counsel Gwynn nodding his head. I, I just, I think this is a very important issue. I found that from a planning boards, from a planning board and from a disability access point of view, that if whoever is appointed to a, this is my personal opinion, whoever is appointed to a, a building committee is at the discretion of a mayor. I know of times when it happened at a, and not in this, certainly not in our current mayor's situation, but whoever was, um, appointed to a committee was determining where this should be or how it should be. It, it takes, it, it, it was Counsel Wheeler saying that it took it out of the hands of this committee and put it more into the appointed board. Is that, am I correct there? Because I just want to know what I'm voting on.
If I may respond.
Counsel Wheeler, answer.
My name was used. Uh, my understanding of this change is it ultimately takes power away from, uh, the Planning and Construction Committee and puts it in the executive branch. Now, that, that power could certainly be transferred by the executive branch and rested in a, um, dedicated building committee. Um, but, uh, certainly the way, the way I read it, currently, the, um, charter vests a lot of power in the Planning and Construction Committee, and as we heard from, I think, one member, they, they seemed to feel that, that it was not necessarily the way that things worked and that it was maybe more power than the Planning and Construction Committee was comfortable with. Personally, I would prefer to hear from, uh, more members of the committee before I voted on this.
Um, Counsel Forgé and then the mayor?
Well, I think that, um, you, you, from a historical perspective, I think you have to go back to former, uh, government to find some of the answers to this. Uh, um, there are those of us that are here that are serving that remember the middle school project. That was an, in, that was an independent board, a planning and building construction board, um, under the auspices of the selectmen to move forward on this. When the charter was drafted, again, um, this language carried forward, and, um, I agree at this point with Counsel Wheeler's, um, assessment, very eloquent, um, comments on how we got to this point. But the whole thing is that now we have a chief executive officer for the city who can determine, uh, what is needed and can appoint to boards. This just seems in many ways to be a vestige back into our old form of government.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Whedon Gardner? Are you off mute?
I was off mute for so long, I didn't realize it. Let me address a couple of things. Uh, with regard to the Board of Health issue, uh, just let me remind, um, certainly those members of the council who served on the planning board, but also just in general. Whenever a project becomes, comes before, uh, the city, regardless of whether it's a municipal building or, um, other facilities, um, it is always subject to a 30-day review with commentary by all departments that could be relative to it. The Board of Health is always included in that list, and the Board of Health can certainly comment to the Planning Department with regard to the project itself and how it is being developed, how it's being designed, how it's being cited, et cetera, et cetera. So that, that's one thing with regard to that particular issue. Uh, in the charter, the Planning and Construction Committee is an advisory committee to the mayor. That's its first role, to be an advisory committee to the mayor. So right away, it's already part of the executive. Uh, and further, uh, I think the most specific thing with regard to the language change that you're reviewing tonight is that previously it said, "shall be responsible for all work in connection with projects, including site planning, surveying, engineering studies, architectural plans, and specifications, and supervision of the construction." Those roles in a city, in this city are quite adequately and obviously fairly successfully, given the amount of construction that has happened over the years, monitored, well, directed by, um, as the new language says, the Department of Planning and Development and Building Inspection. And those, um, additional inputs that you're asking for, um, certainly are, are part of their process and always have been. And that, that is where the people who actually can comment on planning, surveying, engineering studies, and so forth. We have appointed board members for, um, for the Department of, uh, for the Planning Board who reverts back to the Department of Planning and Development. And of course, our building inspector, as Ed Jarvis pointed out, does inspect all, all of the buildings. And, uh, lastly, I forgot.
It's okay, we'll, we'll move on.
Which, which isn't too, too, uh, too unusual. Just, I, I, so I just wanted to let you know, oh, I know what it was. Um, certainly with our two most important municipal buildings, our fire station and our library, that the actual, the chairperson of the Planning and Construction Committee is on there and has been a very active member, and we're grateful for that.
Okay. Um, Madam Clerk?
So I was going to mention that there was someone who's logged in as city council that wanted to comment, but I think it's Counsel Gwynn, and he now has put his name in the chat.
Okay. Um, and after that, then I want to ask Counsel Wheeler a question. Go ahead.
Um, that wasn't me earlier, but I just wanted to point out, in our motion, in our packet today, we were talking about where this came from. In the double asterisk on the bottom, you'll see that it says, "the mayor suggests with agreement of the committee for these changes." So this was one that, um, came out of our city to the committee, uh, to get in compliance with how we are currently doing things. So it came, uh, with a suggestion from the mayor in its entirety and then went to committee for agreement and then. for agreement, and then our A&amp;O gave it a positive recommendation based on those two factors.
Okay, so Counselor Wheeler, a number of things that Counselor Forgie said just has really hit me in a way, so I just want you to explain, like, when we vote yes or no, what, what are we really voting?
Well, it sounds like we're voting to bring things more into compliance with the way that they're actually done. And the mayor makes a very good point in noting that the Planning and Construction Committee is an advisory committee. So the Charter kind of, this, this piece that we're about to vote on kind of does not take that into consideration. So I think what she said probably convinced me again to vote for this. I believe I did vote for it back in Charter review. But yes, the change would change that wording ultimately from being responsible for these projects to monitoring these projects. I think that's ultimately what it comes down to.
Okay. Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Counselor Disorder has her hand up. President Ricketts?
Okay. Is the chat just not working for people? I'm sorry.
No, I, I raised my hand.
I just don't see everyone.
I raised my hand, and I apologize.
I just can't see you.
So I just want to say, I'm going to vote no on this. As someone who served on the planning board, I saw, and I have seen what has happened with appointments to different actual building committee projects, and I have been in favor of all of the building projects that we've had, every single one of them. I wanted them all. But I think it's very different having the head of planning and construction, if the person is a paid employee by the town who works under the auspices of the mayor, and not this mayor at all. I'm not referring to that. I'm referring to past projects, because I think our mayor has been doing a fabulous job as far as getting these things done. But I, I just think that you have board members that serve on, I asked that when the library was coming up. Why would we not be having a member of the planning board who knows what the traffic numbers are and certain things? Not a paid employee, but a, an appointed member who's actually done the study for that. For those reasons, and I have seen many times that the, that the building inspector, and bless his heart, does a absolutely fabulous job with the limited staff that he has. But I have seen things that didn't quite come out exactly as we would wish, and I would prefer to have the, the power in a board that is just looking at the overall picture, the traffic flow in the town. So I'm a no. I just wanted to explain my vote, and that's, that's that.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments? People, I'm sorry, have to use the chat. I only see six people at a time. Sorry. I keep trying to move. Okay. A roll call vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwyn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
No.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel Ray?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes by majority.
Okay. A&amp;O?
I'm sorry, I moved so many papers around a moment ago. Move that be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article 6, Administrative Organizations, Section 6-8, Department of Human Resources, beginning of second paragraph of subsection A, establishment scope be amended as indicated below with the bold text to be added. "The function of the Department of Human Resources shall include, but not be limited to, the following. And the city council further instructs the city clerk to submit the approved vote to the legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request said legislature to amend the city charter."
Second, Forgie.
This was a positive unanimous recommendation from A&amp;O.
President Ricketts, you are on mute.
Yeah. Questions, comments? Seeing none? Roll call vote?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwyn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer? Counselor Elmer, you are on mute.
All right, yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld? I think I skipped over you. I'm so sorry.
Skipped me, but yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel Ray?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, A&amp;O?
I move that be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article 6, Administrative Organization, Section 6-12, Section E, Library Trustee be amended as indicated below with the bold text to be added. Library trustee with consultation of the library trustees would be added, and that the city council further instructs the city clerk to submit the approved vote to the legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request said legislature to amend the city charter.
Second, Elmer?
This received a positive unanimous recommendation. It was a, the library director suggested with consultation of the library trustees, talking about the responsibilities of the trustees when they're involved with the library.
President Ricketts, you are on mute.
Questions or comments? Roll call vote?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwyn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor, Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel Ray?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
A&amp;O?
Counselor Gwyn, you are on mute.
I'm, I'm just looking to see where I am on this. I'm looking at my notes from our meeting compared to what I'm doing now. Let me see.
Page 180.
Yeah, I, I've got that there. I'm just looking at.
He meant, thank you.
All right. I move that be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article 6, Administrative Organization, Section 6-12A, Council on Aging be amended by reducing the number of members from 15 to 11 as follows. "Council on Aging: There shall be a council of aging consisting of not less than three nor more than 11 members appointed by the mayor for staggering three-year terms. And that the city council further instructs the city clerk to submit the approved vote to the legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and requests said legislature to amend the city charter."
Second, Elmer?
This had a positive unanimous recommendation, and it had to deal with attendance and quorums and participation. Counselor Disorder might have more on that, but it was a recommendation to, by their own governing body, to reduce it.
Any questions, comments, input? Roll call?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwyn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yeah.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel Ray?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
Motion passes.
A&amp;O?
I move that be ordered that the Greenfield City Charter, Article 6, Administrative Organization, Section 6-24A and B, Mayor's Task Force Against Domestic Violence be amended as indicated in Exhibit 5 on the Charter Review Committee's report and recommendations as attached. "Section 6-24, Mayor's Task Force Against Domestic, Adding, and Sexual Violence. There shall be a mayor's task force against domestic and sexual violence to advise the mayor with regard to the formation of public policy, public education, and outreach on domestic and sexual violence. The task force shall consist of seven members, three of whom be appointed by the mayor and reviewed by the city council as provided in Section 210, and four of whom shall be appointed as provided in subsection C, and two alternate members appointed by the mayor as above. Alternate members shall sit on the committee in case of the absence, inability to act, or apparent conflict of interest on the part of any committee member, or as part of a regular scheduled rotation among the regular members." That would be added. At the bottom of this, Bay State Franklin Medical Center was added because now that is what its official name is. "The three members and two alternate members to be appointed by the mayor shall serve for terms of three years. And that the city council further instructs the city clerk to submit the approved vote to the legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request said legislature to amend the city charter."
Second, Elmer?
This had a positive unanimous recommendation and was taken from the Mayor's Task Force, Exhibit 5, and it was the language that was submitted, and Counselor Wheeler would be the one with, could expand on this as he submitted this piece.
Counselor Wheeler?
Thanks. This language was submitted by the committee, which I've sat on for the past four years. There has, for nearly the whole time I've sat on it, been extra members who've attended regularly, the same members quite usually. So there's been demand, actually, to have more people on. And the, the committee traditionally meets at 1:00 in the afternoon, which is not a time that works for everyone, and sometimes people have work obligations. So the committee felt that enabling alternate members would enable the committee to more regularly have a quorum and also lend a voice to people who have been attending the meetings anyway.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments? I've already received some emails, Counselor Wheeler, that you are going to be missed, and they are sad that you're not going to be at these meetings any longer. Okay, roll call vote?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwyn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel Ray?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Presentation of petitions or similar papers? Okay. Anyone like to report from their committee? Unfinished business? Old business? New business? I would like to call Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes, I want to say goodbye. But two years ago, when I began my new term on the council, I had some concerns about the direction the council possibly would take. To my surprise, everyone in our council worked very hard for Greenfield. That is to say, we tried to make the best decisions using our knowledge and experience. We were all rowing in the same direction, and it really felt great. This doesn't mean that we always agreed on everything, but we discussed amicably and worked hard to make decisions on base what was in the best interest of the city. And I am proud of having served on our council representing Precinct 9, and I want to thank you all. My fellow counselors especially acknowledging the hard work of Counselor Disorder and our clerk, Kathy Scott. I wish you all a wonderful holiday season with you and your family and friends, and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. You will be missed. Okay. Would any other counselors like to speak before I go?
Penny? Kathy, Kathy wants, has had her hand up.
I, I know that, and I was speaking. Thank you, though.
Sorry.
Do any other counselors want to speak before I call on the clerk and the mayor?
Yes, me, Penny, thank you. Ed Jarvis.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you. I would just like to say to the counselors who are leaving us, it's been both my honor and my privilege to be working underneath you folks the past two years and, and taking in and absorbing your knowledge and maybe some of your, your scopes and your ideas about some things that, that maybe clarified things for me and maybe changed the way that I was thinking. I think we had a great mix of folks on this council, and you guys will be greatly missed. Thank you very much for your dedication and your input for the last two years, helping me grow a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jarvis. Counselor Gwyn?
I just want to kind of build on what Counselor Jarvis just said. This has been a tough working year in a lot of things. I want to thank my A&amp;O committee. This has been a heck of a year in this Charter Review process. Counselor Forgie, Counselor Wheeler, past Counselor Singer have just been great assets in getting us through this far, and, and that committee really worked to put this stuff forward, and I, by all means, I couldn't have done any of it without them. I thank all of you that served as, as officers in, in my last two years. It's a lot of work, and you don't always get a lot of credit. I will truly miss some of the counselors that are leaving. I've known some for years and, and some I, I just met. You know what I mean? There, there are people that, there are couns- There are people that, there are counselors that are leaving that had such, were such assets to this council in so many ways. And, you know, we all got, we had a good year where we got along, we got things done. And I appreciate working with all of you. And, you know, I wish, in a lot of ways, we could just harness some of the energy and the information that everyone brings to these meetings and continue it, because that experience just propels us in the right direction. But thank you, President Ricketts. Thank you for your year. And I thank you all, and to the counselors that are leaving. I wish you the best, and thank you for helping me get my job done also. Thank you.
Okay, so I would like to say that I'm going to miss all of the counselors that will be leaving. I like the diversity of this council from the whole six or seven years I've been on it. I like that I came in ready to vote one way, and after listening to my colleagues, I changed my vote, and that says a lot about what everybody brings to the table, and it's really important. I love Greenfield. I love servings. Why I ran again. And this is the important piece, is when people come and go. And for some of you that are going, don't forget, you can take papers out again. Come back. I don't think the clerk's office will miss my weekly drop-ins for an hour or so just to catch up on everything. And yes, being president was a lot of work. I loved all the meetings, and I love checking in and being close to all the department heads and such. And I've learned a lot from many people. And some of you that sit on some of the subcommittees, that's going to be a big blow to us. Hopefully, we can pick up the slack. It'll be hard to fill some of your shoes, however. You've just done such an outstanding job. Okay, so, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, President Ricketts. I'm just gonna keep it strictly business here and remind those outgoing counselors to return your Chromebooks when you can, please. And counselors, if you are sitting on the council next year and you've received the January 3 organizational meeting request, please respond as soon as you can. There are still three or two or something like that that have not responded. But thank you all. You all have the best for Greenfield in your hearts. And I truly know that you won't want the best for Greenfield. Thank you.
And, yeah, Madam Clerk, thank you for working this out so that we're in person for the way in and doing the reorganization. Because as you can tell, one more time again, these meetings are not very professional with all the glitches that keep going on.
It's gonna be so much fun. We won't need the string in the tin cans.
Yes. See each other and everybody, and nobody gets their feelings hurt because you can't see or can't use the chat or whatever. It would be so good to be in person and have a regular meeting again. So thank you for making that happen, and hopefully we can keep it going. So, Madam Mayor?
Well, I'm gonna bring up the rear here by saying it has been my distinct pleasure to serve with all of you for the last two years while we served in a pandemic. And I want to say goodbye to, I don't want to say goodbye to them. I'm not saying goodbye to them. But I'm saying farewell to Counselors Hirschfeld, Wheeler, Dolan, and Stumpel. You are exemplary counselors. And all of you share a common bond. You are pandemic counselors. And without you, we would not have accomplished many of the things that we've been able to accomplish during the pandemic, which God, I hope, ends, please, soon, one of these days. But at any rate, much appreciated. And frankly, it just makes you fair game for board appointments, so.
Yes.
There you go. Don't think you're getting away easy. So thank you, guys and gals. Bye.
Thank you all. Any other last minute thoughts before I accept a motion to adjourn?
We need motions for reconsideration, President Ricketts.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Any motions for reconsideration? Not seeing any, and I just, one more person. I just want to thank everyone that works in the clerk's office. None of this would happen without them. Please, and Kathy, please take that back to the staff. And also, Will Roberts, thank you. You saved me time and time and time again all year. Thank you so much for everything.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thanks, Penny.
Motion?
Second, Stumpel.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy holidays.
Meeting adjourned.